We call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Garrick.
Here.
Greenberg.
Here.
Pepcorn.
Here.
Strand.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here. Health. Fargo County Public Health reminds us of the community to use basic respiratory illness prevention measures to protect against coronavirus, which includes washing hands with soap and water for twenty seconds. You sing Happy Birthday twice, it works out to twenty seconds. Cover a cough or sneeze with a tissue, and then throw the tissue in the trash. And if tissue is not available, cough or sneeze on your sleeve. Stay home if you are sick and avoid close contact with people who are or appear to be sick. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, and throat clean and disinfect frequently touched objects and surfaces using regular household cleaners and wipes. And rely on credible sources for coronavirus information such as the North Dakota Department of Health or the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention. Desi, your team has done a good job on this, and I see them getting out in the public on radio too, so keep up the good work. Inspections. Digital permitting has come to the inspections department. All resident permits such as new homes remodeling, decks and sheds can now be submitted electronically and completely online. Citizens can permit, uh, submit plans and an application. Get status updates via email along with the final step of paying for the permit online when completed. The electronics middle of the commercial project should happen by two thousand twenty-one, making it easier to do those remodeling jobs. Library. March is Youth Art Month, and the library is holding the annual Design a Bookmark contest for kids, teens, and adults through March thirty-first. The library's seed library is up and running for those new to gardening and don't know where to start, and for those who want to try some new varieties of vegetables, herbs, and flowers. The seeds are free and available while supplies last. Planning. There are one thousand twenty-one vacant lots with infrastructure in Fargo at the end of two thousand nineteen, which is a hundred and thirty-three less than the one thousand one hundred and fifty-four vacant lots at the beginning of two thousand nineteen. There were two hundred and fifty-seven houses permitted on lots within those subdivisions of two hundred and nineteen. Subdivisions with smaller lots had a greater number of houses permitted, led by Bison Meadows with forty-seven and Eagle Valley with thirty-six. There were seven hundred and forty-six lots in Deer Creek subdivision approved between two thousand ten and two thousand thirteen, and houses have been built on six hundred and ninety-three of the lots, leaving fifty-three vacant. Work is progressing at a steady pace in Merchant Town. The three hundred and seventy stall parking garage is currently under construction. The target opening for the parking garage is late fall two thousand twenty. Although there have been some setbacks due to weather, the pile work is eighty-five percent complete. Excavation has started, and most of the dirt work should be completed by the end of March. A crane was delivered onsite to place reinforcing cages over the piles in preparation for concrete work, which will last through May, uh, March, uh, mid-April, excuse me. In May, precast concrete walls will be put in place, and the parking garage will begin to take form. Construction of the mixed-use part of the building is scheduled in mid-April.
Well, motion to approve the Order of Agenda moving item twenty-nine from the Consent Agenda to the Regular Agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried. Motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty, Regular Meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items one through thirty-eight excluding item twenty-nine, which has been moved to the Regular Agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's moved and seconded. Roll call vote.
Greenberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Regular Agenda. Chief Dave Todd is going to give the two thousand nineteen Fargo Police Department Annual Report. Chief Todd?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity to talk a little bit about the Police Department this evening. First, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Annual Report and some of the crime stats that you'd be interested in, and then I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about what we're, what we're doing at the Fargo Police Department. So our Annual Report is actually being pushed online right now as we speak, and it's a flip-page electronic annual report, which we've done for several years now. Uh, I think the part that you would be most interested in is, of course, regarding our crime stats, what's happening in the city of Fargo. Uh, last year, two thousand nineteen, our calls for service went up four percent for a total of ninety-three thousand five hundred and ninety. That's about two hundred and fifty-six calls for service per day, or per twenty-four-hour period. We had a two percent decrease in arrests and a two percent decrease in citations, but we also had a seven percent decrease in traffic crashes in the city of Fargo, a fifteen percent decrease in DUI arrests, which is a good sign. And all in all, uh, we had a three percent increase in offenses. Now, when we look at offenses, they're broken up into two different categories. The Part One categories are the more serious crimes, felonies, person-on-person violent crimes. We had a one percent increase in those Part One crimes. In the Part Two crimes, the second category, which is, uh, the lesser crimes or misdemeanor crimes, often dealing with property, we had a three, a three percent increase in two thousand nineteen. So if we take the total of offenses, we had a three percent increase in crime in the city of Fargo. And down below there, you can see some graphing. Um, it's fairly, fairly close to what it was last year, uh, the year before, in two thousand eighteen. I'm now going to switch to some of the things that we're doing in the Fargo Police Department. At the Fargo Police Department, we have two hundred and ten employees. A hundred and eighty-five of those are sworn officers, and the other twenty-five serve in support roles such as records, crime analyst, evidence technicians. We have an organizational makeup of three divisions within the Fargo Police Department. The Field Services Division, that wear uniforms like I'm wearing, are out in patrol cars. The Administrative Services Division, that's, uh, recruiting, hiring, budgets, grants, records, public relations and PIO functions, evidence and property, and volunteer coordination and quartermaster. And then the third division is the Investigations Division, which is personal crimes, property crimes, financial crimes, crimes against children, street crimes, and narcotics. We have three, uh, primary philosophies we operate under for the Police Department. Community-oriented policing, which we've done for quite some time. That's using relationship, or developing relationships and using those to solve problems within the community. Comstat, which is data-driven. We use data to develop patterns or trends of crime, and then, uh, develop plans of actions and use resources to address that, and then analyze the results of that. And then intelligence-led policing, where we develop information on the people that are, are actually doing the crimes, what their methodology is, whether there are warrants for them, they're on probation or parole, their driving status, what they drive, and then we use that information to try to curtail their activity. So what we've been working on and where we're going here is, of course, we want to have the best people professionally trained and equipped and using the best practices. We also want to have a healthy and positive work environment that attracts the best people and keeps them here. So part of the way we do that are having programs that complement and feed each other. Uh, we've worked really hard in our recruiting to attract and recruit the best. Uh, we have, uh, an Explorer program, which focuses on young people in high school who are interested in a law enforcement career. And then, uh, we have, uh, relationships with the criminal justice clubs through the universities and the colleges, and of course, attend career fairs. We're out there looking for the best people because we want to recruit them to come to our police academy that we're just starting in May and use that academy to identify the people with integrity and character that match our values and, and recruit them and do a conditional hire phase within the academy so that after they graduate from the academy, we can swear them in right away and, and start them in our police training officer program. Uh, because we'll be training them the Fargo Police Department way in the academy, that'll create another, a number of efficiencies. Um, that'll actually, because of the number of people we hire on average per year, having our own academy will save us two years' worth of man-hours every year because we consolidate in that training and we make it more efficient. Upon completion of our police training officer program, we have a mentoring program where younger officers are paired up with older officers that can mentor them and kind of coach, coach them along, uh, their career as they develop. And then we're also have been developing career track guides, um, for officers that are interested in specialty positions or supervisory positions and leadership positions within the department. And they can take those career tracks, uh, which consist of training and prepare themselves for those positions. So we certainly have been interested in building trust within the department, and part of how we started doing that was having listening sessions to identify and address issues within the department. And then we use those listening sessions to develop a strategic plan, use their, their ideas and include them. And then, once we had a roadmap built, we put the right people in the right seats of the bus and empowered them to get the job done for us, and that builds trust within our department. Another thing that, uh, that, uh, is useful in inclusion is having committees that help us determine how we're going to do things. I have a Chief's Leadership Advisory Committee that I meet with, that's a person from each work group in our department. And as you can see, we have a number of other committees, and this is just a sample of them, that help us determine how we're going to do things in the department and, and take ideas from the officers and try to incorporate them. We also build trust through communication. As you can see, we have a number of newsletters within the department that come out on a regularly scheduled basis. Uh, that, that creates, uh, knowledge for people on what's going on in different areas of the, of the department. We also have a weekly, uh, multi-agency intelligence-led policing meetings, district training meetings where supervisors meet with their officers, our daily briefings that happen three times, or actually six times a day in our Patrol Division, and our weekly investigations meeting. We also had tried to have an emphasis of building trust with our community. Uh, you've probably noticed a pretty proactive and aggressive outreach program where we're trying to explain to the community what we're doing and why we're doing it. So you'll see myself and a number of my command officers do speaking engagements, and we have a very proactive, uh, stance and presence on social media. We also try to do, uh, media stories with our local media whenever we have the, the chance and, and engage our community. So some of the initiatives we've implemented and completed, actually, are new promotion processes for just about every position in our department except for mine. Education-based discipline, where, uh, if there's a disciplinary issue, officers have the chance to choose doing this, where they can learn and provide education to the rest of the department so they don't make that same mistake. And then, uh, mentoring programs I talked about before, our multi-jurisdictional teams. Uh, in our building, we have fifteen members from other law enforcement agencies throughout this area that participate on those teams, and that makes us more efficient and effective. We also have a spouses auxiliary that is a sort, support mechanism for our department, and we have a formal swearing-in ceremony, which you're all invited to at, at any time. We also have a comprehensive wellness program, um, Mind, Body, and Soul. It's a philosophy I brought back after attending the FBI Academy. Uh, we have a, a wellness committee that consists of exercise physiologists, people that have some expertise in diet science. Uh, we have chaplains involved, peer counseling involved, um, so we, we're trying, and financial advisors involved. We also have a, a physical readiness assessment that we're, uh, about halfway through the implementation process. That is an obstacle course our officers run, and it, uh, actually incorporates all the components of our job essentials in our job description to make sure that we, as public safety officers, can respond to emergencies. Do comprehensive medical checkups, and of course, we've implemented, uh, training for our new specialty positions. We have a crime analyst position now, a PIO crime prevention position, creative content producer that does our videography. We've done a long-term project that we finished now of the Lexipol Policy System. That was a full policy and procedures book that we have finished and implemented. It's all electronic. It updates automatically any federal, state, or local law changes, changes, as well as any case law changes at the federal or state level. And then that changes the policy and pushes it out to our people. Uh, we didn't, went through a department-wide customer service training for our department, and through that, uh, did an inclusive exercise on determining what our quality standards were, which were safety, courtesy, empathy, and trust, and then used those quality standards to create our common purpose for our department. We've also created a community engagement team. I'm sure you've seen them out there on their videos of our community trust officers and our cultural liaison officers and our school resource officers. We now have an airport police, a parks officer. Uh, I attended a Georgetown University Fellowship Program in Washington, DC, and from that was able to bring back, uh, juvenile diversion strategies program, which we've implemented within our department, which, uh, addresses juveniles that are their first, uh, time encounter with law enforcement in the criminal justice program, that we can divert them instead of ju, going to juvenile court. We can get them into programming and provide some mentoring and coaching. And then, of course, thanks to you, our new police station. So some of the new initiatives that we got going on, I already talked a little bit about, the recruiting and hiring and trying to find the best for our academy and, 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 uh, create the efficiencies there. Our physical readiness assessment, which we're about halfway through the implementation of that. Uh, we are doing a study this year on a new mobile app that connects to our, our computer-aided dispatch system and records management system, where officers can dispatch themselves to a call on this mobile app and enter comments in the call. They can also get the route, the mapping route to the call, as well as a picture of the front of the address they're responding to. If we end up on a critical incident, supervisor can use a mobile app to see where each officer is, uh, through their geolocation. Another thing we're going to study this year, uh, we've started studying is accreditation. I know that some of you are interested in that, so we're doing a study on that to see if that's the right thing for our department. The, the committee that we formed will then provide a recommendation on that, and we'll bring that to you. The other thing we're really focused on is trying to get the other two divisions that are not patrol, uh, to be patrol-ready. If we have a natural disaster, a terrorist event, or something that we need people on the street, uh, the expectation is they would be, everybody would be able to suit up and help with whatever duties we have on the street. And so by, by getting everybody to put their blue suit on about every two months and do a shift in patrol, we're trying to keep that, uh, that acclamation there, and, and we're going to focus them on the downtown area so we have a better presence downtown. And then our UAS program. Uh, Police and Fire are partnered in this, and we're partnering with other, uh, other city departments. There's a lot of potential here. There's obviously the public safety potential, uh, but we're going to further develop this program too. And that brings, brings me to the conclusion. If I, you have any questions, I can certainly try to ask.
Any questions from the Commissioners? Went through a thorough, that was really good. I really like the fact that the academy's coming here to town because you can get your guys working faster. That's fantastic. Commissioner Garrick.
Yeah, good presentation. Um, I have one request for it. So when we talk about the stats from year to year, you know, if we see a property, property crimes goes up by seven percent from eighteen to nineteen, that might make us worried and act. What I want to see is a trend, though. So if you have a trend, you have to have at least three points of data. So I'd like to see at least three years of that data, because maybe twenty eighteen was a low year, and nineteen was a normal year, and, but it, but it had a seven percent increase over that timeframe, you know what I mean?
Right.
So I want to be able to have that context so that we don't overreact as, as city officials, and then we don't worry the public because it was a seven percent increase, which seems like a lot, over one, just one year.
So it may not be part of your annual report, but maybe one just for the Commission when we come forth to that.
And, and we do have probably the last five years of annual reports readily available that are on, online on our, um, website. So you can certainly look at those, but the seventeen to eighteen was three percent also.
Commissioner Strand.
Thank you. Um, Chief Todd, I'm just curious. I'm guessing your department is about two full years at least into deploying Narcan on a regular basis and having it available. Could you, from your perspective, give us a sense of how that's working and how it's impacting the crime in the streets as well?
Well, um, I, I couldn't tell you exactly how it's impacting crime, but I can tell you that we've used it on occasion, um, with successful results. Uh, often, uh, Fire and EMS are there, and they, they use it also. It depends on who arrives unseen first, but we've had some, some saves using that.
Is, is your sense that we're in a better place today than we were a few years ago?
When you're talking about saving lives, definitely. I think we're in a better place.
I think the death rate is half of what it used to be, Commissioner Strand. I think that's what we looked at statistics, is the opioids overdose has really gone down, but Chief Todd will sometimes say there's a different drug out there, so we're seeing a different problem.
Our, our overdose deaths are about the same, uh, but the opioid overdoses are about half of what they were in, I think it was, it's sixteen. But our meth overdose deaths have increased.
And if I might clarify my question about crime, in, you've, over time, often referred to the criminal element of the, of the drug world. It's not the saves, but i, is there a trend that we can note there with regard to those activities in our community right now? If meth is going up and opioids are going down, do you have a sense of the overall picture of that?
Well, um, I guess not specific, no. Uh, just the, the meth has increased. It's being brought up from, from Mexico, uh, as the, a lot of the, the heroin was also. Um, so it's, it's cartel-related, and then it's filtered through the cities and then to Fargo.
Any other comments? Commissioner Greenberg.
Dave, if you could comment on a couple items. I'd just be curious in your thoughts on decreases, for example, decrease in citations and crashes or automobile accidents. Be curious, um, and based on Commissioner Garrick's point about, is that just a blip, or has it been kind of a trend line? Just curious what your thoughts are and, as to why? And then, two, if you could comment on how things are going with downtown, um, because I do hear from now on in, people's, you know, question mark or how things with downtown safety.
Right. So, uh, let me talk about DUIs, citations, and traffic accidents. Um, a lot of our site, or a, a good portion of our citations are tied to traffic accidents. So if traffic accidents drop by seven percent as they did, uh, this last year, our citations might drop a little bit in that area also. Um, some of that might be due to technology. Uh, we get a lot of backing accidents, and now more and more cars have the sensors where people can tell if there's, uh, side traffic coming as well as a, a backing camera. I think that has certainly contributed to less accidents. The DUIs, I, I'm going to cross my fingers and hope that it's due to education and, uh, availability of, of ride services like Uber and Lyft. Uh, we certainly see on weekend nights, uh, the next morning, many more cars in the parking lot of liquor establishments than we ever did before.
Thoughts on downtown?
Downtown, um, crime is about the same downtown as far as activity level as compared to the year before. Uh, we've tried to increase our presence down there with walking, walking patrols, especially when the weather is, is decent enough to do so. So I'm, I'm hoping people have noticed a little bit of a difference. And then our, our new strategy of taking people out of investigations and out of the Administrative Bureau, including up to my position, to spend a day out on the street, um, once a month or once every two months will help with that presence downtown.
We'll really have to see what it goes off this, this year, because we've got some more officers downtown as well, so I think it changes. Thank you, Chief Todd. Appreciate that. We go to public hearings. Uh, item A, continued to four, six, twenty, the alley vacation, the alley between lot twelve block twenty-six and part of lot seven and all the lots. Can I have a motion to continue hearing? Second. Roll call vote.
Greenberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Section five, three oh seven Federal Transportation Administration Grant Preliminary Program of Projects in two thousand twenty, continued from the two twenty-four Regular Meeting. Julie Bummelman to explain.
Ah, yes, thank you. Uh, every year, we bring forward, uh, as required per our guidelines, the Program of Projects, which is formula money coming from Federal Transit Administration for the transit, uh, operations. So in front of you, you'll see, this year we were awarded two point eight zero seven million. And, uh, what we do is we break that down between operating capital, so maintenance, um, and then our paratransit ADA service, so we spread that out. We're also required to pu, um, spend one percent of the total allocation on safety and security measures, and we, we never have a problem reaching that one percent. So, anyway, um, there's not a lot more to say. Uh, any questions? Have a good answer.
Does anyone in the public would like to speak to the program of two thousand twenty? Anybody want to speak? I'll close the public hearing. Do I have any questions? By the Commissioner, Commissioner Strand.
I make the recommended motion, Mayor.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, and I have a question.
Mr. Greenberg.
I believe you just commented, does budget sync with any of our capital commitments on the renovations, et cetera? So there's no, there's no changes in our planned forecast with federal money and local and capital?
No, no. That's, that's completely separate. You're right. You're spot on.
Commissioner Pepcorn.
I have a question for Julie about, so is this based on, obviously, the census is this year, do they go by population as far as how much money we get?
There's a couple different things that feed into that. Um, one of the, one of the factors is that we are currently considered a small transit-intensive city, which got us another five hundred and forty-eight thousand this year, which is included in the two point eight million. Now, once the new census comes in, we will not be considered that. The anticipation is we'll go over the two hundred thousand population, so, uh, funding will change a little bit differently, but we will still get allocations. It just is not going to be figured the same, calculated the same.
So, one more question, Mr. Church. So is the population of both counties together, the, the two hundred thousand, is that how they get the number?
Yeah, it's the, what they consider the UZA, so it's Fargo and West Fargo for these numbers, and then Morehead gets a separate allocation.
Thank you.
Are we supposed to have West Fargo not grow, Dave? Is that the thing?
No, we want them all to grow. That's, that's.
Yes, we do.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Strand.
Yes.
Greenberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Item C, Bentley Place First Edition, fifty-six oh one thirty-three Avenue South, approval recommended by, by Planning Commission on two, four, twenty. There's a zoning change and rezoning ordinance and a planned unit development master plan unit plan assumes. Donald Crest to explain.
Good evening, Commissioners. Donald Crest with the Department of Planning and Development. As the mayor stated, uh, this item is the Bentley Place First Edition. It's a zone change from LC Limited Commercial with a conditional overlay to LC Limited Commercial with a planned unit development and a request to repeal the earlier condition, or the current conditional overlay and a PUD master land use plan. So what's going to happen here is that the proposed, uh, planned unit development will take all the, pretty much all the items of the existing conditional overlay and incorporate them into that, carry those ideas forward. The, uh, the aerial here, as you see, the property is located at fifty-six oh one thirty-third Avenue South. Here's Cedar Parkway and thirty-third Avenue. Project takes access off both sides, and there's actually, this is a slightly older photograph, but there's actually a private drive that goes around here that it also takes access from. And here are a couple photographs on the ground here that just show the surrounding residential and commercial development. Uh, the zoning again is zoned LC Limited Commercial. The surrounding zoning is MR three, which is this color here, and some more limited commercial. Uh, the conditional overlay is ordinance forty-nine hundred, dates from two thousand thirteen. It provides design guidelines and prohibits some uses. And again, these provisions of the conditional overlay are carried through into the planned unit development. The applicant has provided a preliminary master land use plan that depicts the Eagle Ridge Mixed Use Project, which is intended to blend commercial and multifamily residential design standards to create an urban and vibrant live, live, work, and play setting. The project proposes eight mixed-use buildings that will consist of approximately six hundred and fifty residential units, seventy-two thousand square feet of commercial space, and a plaza. This would be the plaza here. And will include undergrounding, underground and internal ground-level parking. I believe these are some renderings that, again, the applicant has supplied. Uh, again, going back to the detail of the PUD, uh, Commissioners have had several of these before you in recent years. The PUD allows the applicant to tailor development standards to the specifics of the project. The proposed PUD modifications to the, uh, underlying limited commercial zone are shown here. And there is also the design standards, again, continued from the conditional overlay, which are noted here. And I believe there's some more detail in your staff report. Uh, the applicant's representative, Mr. Jim Bullis of Eagle Ridge Development, is with us this evening and may wish to address the Commission. Planning Commission's recommendation is stated in the staff report and shown on the screen. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
It seemed like in planning you kept having eight oh votes, so this would be something they pretty much like, right?
Uh, it, they, uh, there was a favorable recommendation, yes, sir.
Anyone present who wishes to speak? Anyone present who wishes to speak to the commission? Jim Bullis, do you wanna talk to us? That's fine. We wanna hear about this good project.
Mayor Mahoney, Commissioners, again, my name is Jim Bullis. I, I don't have a lot to add to what John, John and Donna Crest have gone through this extensively so far. If there's any questions you might have, I'll certainly try and answer them. John couldn't be here tonight, so.
Just seems a lot of you are now putting plazas in to make some areas in common area for people to congregate. Is that the new deal to do?
Yeah, uh, in, in large part that is. Uh, Mary, we've, you know, we built our office building, our new headquarters, right, adjacent to the site. And we're in, in the, in the middle of construction of our second commercial office building there. Um, we really think, you know, we wanna do something special with this piece of property. It's, it's a very good, uh, location in Fargo. And we think that, uh, we wanna get, within reason, as many people as we can in that area to help support that commercial. That's why we're looking for the minimum amount, thirty units per acre, uh, departure from the city standards. Why, it's a PUD.
Quite a bit of density. That'd help increase that?
Yep.
Anyone present who wish to speak other than Jim? We'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just add this to the exciting project. And when you look at what's gone on in the Veterans Boulevard area, it's just amazing to see the growth. And this will be a really nice complement to the area.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand? Mahoney?
Aye. Item D, Osgood Townsite Eleventh Edition, four, seven, eleven, four, seven, thirty-one, four, seven, fifty-one, four, seven, eighty-one, Forty-Fifth South. Approval recommended by the Planning Commission. There's a zoning change and first reading of the rezoning ordinance. Donald Crest to explain as well.
Yes, sir. Uh, as the mayor stated, this item is located on Forty-Fifth Street South here. Uh, there's, uh, forty, this is actually Forty-seventh Avenue and then Forty-Sixth Street that curves down here. And there's a private drive here, as you see. Again, this is a proposal, again, for a mixed use building. Uh, the zone change here, uh, is going to go from, uh, LC Limited Commercial with a conditional overlay, again, another conditional overlay, to general commercial with a conditional overlay. There are a couple of modifications to that conditional overlay that are noted in your staff report. But it's, it's continuing most of the ideas of that conditional overlay. Again, this, uh, photos here on the ground show, uh, probably a little more melted here now today. But these are just, uh, shows the location, the surrounding, uh, multifamily and commercial development, as you see there. And the zoning here again is limited commercial. So the situation here is the, uh, developer, which is Pace's Lodging, uh, intends to build a, uh, four-story mixed use building. And the current, uh, limited commercial zone and the conditional overlay do have some limitations on height. To be able to get this height, they're going to, they propose changing to general commercial, which will, uh, give them some height on that project. But again, our standard, uh, land development code residential protection standards will still apply in relation to the surrounding residential. So they'll, they'll still be protected on that point. The, uh, there is a conditional use permit that was approved by the Planning Commission on this in February fourth of two thousand twenty. As your commission knows, the Planning Commission is the decision maker on conditional use permits. A conditional use, use permit does allow residential use in the general commercial zone. And the Planning Commission also added an item to the existing, or the, the conditional overlay, uh, which will require that the, the first floor will only be non-residential uses. So basically to ensure that this will be a mixed use building when it is developed. So the Planning Commission's, uh, recommendation is stated on the screen, uh, stated on your staff report and shown on the screen. The applicant's representative, Blake Carlson of Pace's Lodging, is here with us tonight and may wish to address the commission. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, I have nothing to add to the report, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Questions, Blake?
No, I don't think so. Thanks, Blake. Looks like a nice project.
Anybody else in the public wishes to speak to this? Nobody wishes to speak to this item? We'll do a closed, uh, public hearing and we have a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Donald. Item forty-one, Engineering Service Amendment, uh, number two for the Apex Engineering Group in the amount of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and five dollars for the proven district BN twenty AL. University Drive North from Thirty-second Avenue to Fortyth Avenue North. Brenda Daring to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Attached you will find an amendment to, uh, for engineering services. In two thousand eighteen, we went out for original RFP to do the environmental documentation for this project. It is, uh, the urbanization of North University Drive from Thirty-second Avenue North to Fortieth Avenue North. And so originally we had gone out in two thousand eighteen with the idea that they would do the environmental documentation for it and then give us a preliminary design that then we could take during two thousand nineteen, when we weren't doing the water main replacement projects and complete that design. Um, due to some project overruns, the North Dakota DOT requested that we, uh, push that project back to a February of two thousand twenty-one, uh, bid opening. And so by doing that, that's pushing the design into this year. And all of our staff are committed to, uh, water main replacement projects for this year. So, um, our request was to, uh, do an amendment to add the preliminary design on, or the final design onto their contract. Um, it's really, the environmental documentation along with the design is really integral. So to bring another RFP and another contractor on this time, um, becomes problematic. We will, once the final design is complete and we have a contractor, we will go out for a second RFP to do the construction management. Um, I'd entertain any questions.
Questions, Brenda? Mr. Garrick?
So this money was gonna be spent either way, is what I hear?
Correct.
Okay.
Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item forty-two, request for proposals to develop city-owned properties, three fourteen, three twenty, three twenty-one, or three twenty-four, excuse me, Seventh Street North, seven twelve, Fourth Avenue North, and a resolution authorizes the sale of the property, eleven eleventh Street North. Nicole Cotrell to explain.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, in front of you, I have, uh, two requests. Uh, as we move forward, we'll separate these projects into two different activities. But for, um, sake of, um, explaining how we got here, I included them together. Uh, we have a grouping of properties on Seventh Street North. Uh, it's highlighted on this map on the top right-hand corner. And then we have a property at eleven eleventh Street, uh, South, or North, um, that's, uh, on the kind of bottom end towards the map down here, next to the, uh, Nester property. Uh, this is a, the one on the north on the Seventh Street is across the street from the Sanctuary. And, um, both of these, uh, groups of properties were acquired with CDBG dollars and for the purpose of removing slum and blight back in, um, uh, gosh, probably twenty fourteen, twenty sixteen or so. And, um, in two thousand eighteen, it came in front of you that, um, you can see this little notch we don't own on the Seventh, uh, Street properties. In, um, discussions with, uh, Coburn Group, it seemed like, um, in discussions that it might make sense to swap these properties. Um, because this property here helps their project on Nester and this property here allows us to complete that block for our future, um, affordable housing project that we would continue to, um, build through CDBG dollars. Um, the CDBG rules do not allow for a simple swap. And so, uh, we have separated these two projects into two different RFP request, one's an RFP, um, the one on the north side, which we would be looking to partner with a developer to build an affordable housing project here. And on the south side, we have removed the slum and blight, and so we don't really have any interest in participating in CDBG, um, uh, uh, rules anymore, or, um, I should say objectives anymore. And so we just offer this up for a fair market value. CDBG, uh, requires that we get an appraisal, which we did. Um, that property is worth a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, uh, five hundred. And, um, and so, uh, minimum, um, request would be for that. But then we've also added additional conditions in keeping with the downtown and focus plan and the future land use and goals, um, to determine the highest and best use. So with that, we have, um, the request of two separate activities. Um, one is to authorize staff to release the, um, request for proposals on the, on the properties on the, um, Fourth Avenue and Seventh Street. And then the, the other would be to approve the resolution, which is in your packet, authorizing the sale of the city-owned property at eleven eleventh Street North. So I know this is a little complicated as we interact with these two properties and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Nicole? Do I have a motion?
Just to clarify then, Nicole, I'd be looking for two different motions?
Yeah, two different motions. Uh, that would be, uh, in your packet. I don't have them in a slide, but.
I'll make the, uh, fourth, Fourth Avenue, Seventh Street, Fourth, Seventh Street motion then.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Second motion, please.
Make the second motion then on the property down by the Nester.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call vote.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item forty-three, application for property, uh, exemption for improvements made to the buildings. May I have a motion?
I say move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item forty-four, spring flood update. I think, uh, Nathan's gonna start this off.
Yeah, I'll start us out here. Uh, good evening, Mayors and Commissioners. Uh, we're here to give you guys an update, uh, on what the current outlook is looking like for us for, uh, the potential spring flood and kind of preparations that have been ongoing since I last spoke to you, uh, two weeks ago. So, uh, here is our current probabilistic forecast that the National Weather Service issued, uh, right around ten days ago on February twenty-seventh. Uh, you can see that, uh, we still have a pretty good chance of receiving a rather large significant flood here, depending on what the melt actually looks like. If I, uh, happen to have the forecast that was issued in early February up here as well, you'd notice though that our numbers have decreased a little bit, uh, between those two forecasts. Uh, that's primarily due to, uh, the great weather pattern. We've been of no moisture at all. And, uh, that's really helping out the outlook here as we keep on moving into, uh, whatever the spring flood may bring us. So this next, uh, graph here is the exact same numbers, uh, that we had on the previous slide. It's just kind of a different graphic approach that the National Weather Service use. Uh, from here though, you can see that our fifty percent mark is right around that thirty-five foot level, which would be the same as what we experienced last year in two thousand nineteen. And then our ten percent number is, uh, real similar to, uh, the flood we saw in two thousand eleven, which, uh, if you guys recall, is the fourth highest on record. So we still do have a chance to have a rather large flood event here. Next slide here is actually the Cheyenne River. So, uh, we're showing the Cheyenne River because, uh, they have not seen really a lot of changes in, uh, their projections here yet. Uh, so while the Red River has, uh, luckily been seeing our numbers go down slightly, not very significant, but down slightly. Uh, the Cheyenne River still looks like, uh, it's going to have real similar, uh, flooding on its, uh, through its, uh, you know, river course here, uh, this upcoming spring, especially in the areas, uh, north and west, West Fargo and in that Harwood area. So if you go to the different graphic approach, I think it really helps kind of paint the picture here for, uh, what they're looking for in the Cheyenne River. You can see their ninety-five percent mark is projected to be ninety-one point four, which is higher than what they experienced last year. So National Weather Service is saying that there's a real high probability that they're gonna exceed what they had last year, which of course had significant overland flooding all over the place. So, uh, what does our probabilistic forecast means in terms of what we may have to do coming into this spring flood? So as you guys know, uh, we're still planning for right around that thirty-nine foot crest number. Uh, we won't actually start deploying any of the measures until we actually see a deterministic forecast or actually start seeing the waters flowing into the river system. But if we experience that thirty-nine foot crest, uh, the red box here, you can see we'd still be looking at right around eight miles of emergency measures to construct. Uh, luckily, uh, we've been completing a lot of work here over the past ten years, as you guys know, so just point of reference. So, as I mentioned here a little bit ago, uh, two thousand eleven is right around this thirty-nine foot crest. Two thousand eleven, we constructed twenty-eight miles worth of emergency measures. So, uh, we significantly reduced that number that we'd have to construct. Of course, though, um, we don't know what the flood is actually gonna result in until we actually start seeing that water starting to move. So engineering, we like to have a wide range or a suite of options, fully prepared, ready to go. So that way we can react accordingly. So if for some reason it goes higher than thirty-nine feet, we got a plan in place, we can easily implement. And of course, the goal is always be able to pull back. Hopefully, uh, we're not gonna see a thirty-nine foot river crest and we can pull back and adjust accordingly when we actually start seeing that water flowing into the river. Uh, so here's just kind of a different graphic approach. Uh, thirty-nine foot crest again here on the right-hand side. There's a map where we'd have to be, not expecting you guys to exactly see every detail on this one. But just for a point of reference, we'd have about twenty-two, uh, locations. We'd be constructing clay levees on this type of flood. Five, uh, locations, we'd be building, uh, trap bags. And then right around, uh, ten mile, or ten miles, ten locations of, uh, sandbagging operations, we'd still have to complete where you see those, uh, red stars. With that, Terry will talk about Sandbag Central.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, Terry Ledlam with, uh, Solid Waste Division in Sandbag Central. Um, as Nate, uh, just mentioned, in preparation for that thirty-nine foot crest or forty-one foot protection level, we are in need of some sandbags. City of Fargo's specific needs would be about two hundred and fifty thousand. And partnering with Cass County this year, their need would be about a hundred and fifty thousand. To prepare those, we're looking at about four days of operation. And so we're looking at activating Sandbag Central tomorrow, uh, Tuesday, March ninth, and then working through Friday, March thirteenth, uh, twelve-hour operating days from seven AM to seven PM. Uh, the sandbags then would be transported, uh, City of Fargo's sandbags would be stored inside at the, in the Public Works Facility. And Cass County's sandbags then would be transported out to the Cass County Highway Department. Ideal operation at Sandbag Central then through the, it was, uh, twelve hours of operation, our two hundred volunteers at any point in time to make sure we can run our spider machines at, at the most, uh, optimization. And so, um, realistically then, we're looking for again, two hundred at any one of those times. And I think Mark Williams is maybe gonna walk us through a little bit of, uh, that volunteer registration.
Mark, will you step up? Are there gonna be any shuttles tomorrow?
Y- yes. Um, let me touch on that in a couple minutes.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, the, the volunteer outlook has been looking well so far. Uh, one thing that I'm not sure that anyone mentioned is, is this a joint venture between the City of Fargo and Cass County as far as making all these sandbags? Um, and to reiterate a little bit, um, we will be open seven AM tomorrow till seven PM, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. Uh, one good source of reference would be our website at fargond.gov slash flood volunteers. Uh, this website is gonna identify everything that's going on, uh, for the two thousand twenty flood fight. Uh, it's gonna tell the, uh, numbers to contact, which is four, seven, six, four thousand, if you have any questions. We're also looking at groups to sign up. And if there is any groups that have more than fifteen people, please contact four, seven, six, four, one, four, one, and we can get you scheduled on the list. And as, as you look through the website, you can kind of see a calendar created to where groups have already signed up. The school districts have done a great job at contacting us. We're gonna need volunteers from roughly seven AM till nine AM in the mornings and then maybe two to three PM to, uh, seven PM in the evenings. Um, on this website, it identifies parking locations around Sandbag Central. And we will, to get to your point, have a, a shuttle bus going around, um, pretty continuously, picking up the volunteers that are parking along the road here and dropping them off. Any questions on the volunteers?
You look like you have a lot of red spots, so you need a lot of people.
Yes, we would definitely use more people. Um, please contact us or, or please show up tomorrow. And, and we'll, we'll, oh, one last thing is we are using the Salamander System to keep track of volunteers this year. Uh, it's a digital system that creates a, a database. It helps us keep track of the volunteers a little bit more easier. And one thing that makes that most effective is if you bring your ID, because then we can quickly scan your driver's license and it puts the information in for us to be able to do that.
Make it easy.
Good, Mr. Church, can I ask a question? So, Mark, is there a phone number? Can you do it online? Can you show us how to do that?
For larger groups, I would contact us directly at four, seven, six, four, one, four, one.
And as, as you look through the website, you can kind of see a calendar created to where groups have already signed up. The school districts have done a great job at contacting us. We're going to need volunteers from roughly 7:00 AM till 9:00 AM in the mornings and then maybe 2:00 to 3:00 PM to, uh, 7:00 PM in the evenings. Um, on this website, it identifies parking locations around Sandbag Central. And we will, to get to your point, have a, a shuttle bus going around, um, pretty continuously, picking up the volunteers that are parking along the road here and dropping them off. Any questions on the volunteers?
You look like you have a lot of red spots, so you need a lot of people.
Yes, we would definitely use more people. Um, please contact us or, or please show up tomorrow and, and we'll, we'll, oh, one last thing is we are using the Salamander System to keep track of volunteers this year. Uh, it's a digital system that creates a, a database. It helps us keep track of the volunteers a little bit more easier. And one thing that makes that most effective is if you bring your ID, because then we can quickly scan your driver's license and it puts the information in for us to be able to do that.
Make it easy.
Good, Mr. Chair. Can I ask a question? So, Mark, is there a phone number? Can you do it online? Can you show us how to do that?
For larger groups, I would contact us directly at 476-4141.
So, and how about individual people?